For the pledge of allegiance, today's pledge of allegiance will be led by Naomi Vaca and Jasmine Ontiveros, both students at Escondrias.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies. Next, we'll move to item number three, superintendent's comments.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, just FYI, trustee Cynthia Nahedah is not here today because she is attending the TASSA Tasby Legislative Conference in Austin. And on behalf of the school board and district, Ms. Nahedah is taking the opportunity to communicate our students' needs and priorities to legislators in Austin. She'll also be receiving an update on legislative activities and proposed bills. So also, even though she's not here, we want to wish her a happy birthday, which she had on February 19th, Ms. Cynthia Nahedah. Trustee Angelica Rodriguez also has a birthday that is coming up on February 25th, so we wish you a very happy birthday, Ms. Rodriguez. We know you are a year younger and wiser.
And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Happy birthday, Ms. Rodriguez.
On Saturday.
This year, as many of y'all may know, Socorro ISD was selected as an HEB Education in Excellence finalist for the second year in a row. Yesterday, on Monday, the HEB judges flew in from Austin, Texas, and visited our amazing school district and met with several of our stakeholders that included the students, that included teachers, parents, and just so many community members as part of their competition. And the judges, when they were leaving to catch their flight back to Austin, they were very, very complimentary and impressed by the passion and the dedication of our team and our students. So I greatly appreciate the efforts of our entire community, which is why our school district continues to be recognized as a model district across the state and across the country. I'm very proud and grateful to be part of an elite team SISD. And today, I'd like to acknowledge a new member to our team. And I know I'm not going to say this last name correct, so you'll have to help me out. Mr. Arturo Oaxaca, who is our new licensed specialist in school psychology. Mr. Oaxaca, welcome. Welcome to Team SISD, coming from Arlington, correct? Arlington, but I know you're a Houston Texan fan and not a Dallas Cowboy fan, right? Alright, we're okay, we're alright. Now, welcome to Team SISD. Also, congratulations to all of our Campus Teachers of the Year and to our Elite Eight Teachers of the Year, who were selected at today's reception. All of our teachers, every single one of them, whether they're here or they're back at the campus, they are champions and we appreciate their hard work. A fun contest for our students, which is called the Battle of the Blue Bonnets, will take place Friday, February 24th, here at the DSC, so we're looking forward to that. Good luck to all of our wonderful students who will participate and a huge thank you to all who made that event possible. President Gondra, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to item number four, Board Honors, Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Gondra, members of board and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Tonight's first recognition is in honor of SISD athletes who won their divisions in the 15th Annual Volunteer After School Sports Program, or VASP Soccer Playoffs. These athletes, from grades pre-K through six, dedicated many hours in after-school practices to perfect their technical abilities on the field and advanced through the season and playoffs to be crowned champions. We'll begin with our Pee-wee's, or pre-K division champions, from HD Healy Elementary. Xavier Sanchez. Itzel Rivera. Scarlett Sanchez. Liliana Escamia. Ian Gonzalez. Krista Bella Duarte. Santiago Ruiz. Josue Estrada. Giovani Guevara. Luciana Rodriguez. Assistant coaches, Efren Guevara. And their head coach is Ignacio Sanchez. As the students are gathering for a photo, just a quick note that the picture is taken by our district photographer, Mr. Acavius Largo, will be posted on our district website. There's a photo or camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner to our SmugMug account. Those pictures will be available for free, high-resolution download. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Alright, congratulations once again. The champions of our minors division, which is kinders in first grade, are from Escondrias Elementary School. They are Elijah Garay. Vivian Garay. Ryan Dominguez. Cheyenne Carrera. Belen Pascias. Preston Sanchez. Charles Sanchez. Ydelfonso Carrera. Ruben Arredondo. Gustavo Salivar. Julian Magallanes. Jaleen Ontiveros. Emiliano Valenzuela. Naveya Sejera. Gabriel Vaca. Adrian Seines. Kendra Duran. Angel Ventura. Assistant coaches are Judy Garay. Michael Rodriguez. And head coach is Michael Garay. Our champions in the intermediate division, second and third grade, are from John Druken School. Congratulations to Gael Melgar. Andre Salazar. Pablo Zarate. Alejandro Gonzalez. Montiego Javier Ramos. Luis Lerma. Marcos Rosales. Santiago Dominguez. Samuel Murillo. Mia Suarez. Assistant coach, Arturo Salazar. And head coach, Victor Gonzalez. Congratulations once again. Winning the championship in the seniors division, fourth and fifth grade, are from Mission Ridge Elementary School. Congratulations to Carlos Anchondo. Keira Hernandez. Jonathan Vasquez. Ilan Valdez. Brandon Salas. Iber Álvarez. Gael Baragán. Jose Guerrero. Isabel Baragán. Jasmine Rocha. Joshua Muñoz. Ramiro López. Alan Rodríguez. Stephanie Flores. Kaitlin Ita. Edwin Medrano. Leslie Pérez. Brianna Moreno. And they are led by Coach Emanuel Malanche. Congratulations once again. The champions in the pros sixth grade division are from Socorro Middle School. Congratulations to Marc Anthony López. Carlos Corero. Estrella López. Irvin Boucher. Gerardo Luján. Ángel Ávila. Isabella Trujillo. Diego Cruz. Yancy Villalobos. Ricardo Luján. Ruby Caldera. Yahir Mesa. Assistant coaches, Jose Luis Herrera. And they are led by head coach, Lorelei López. Congratulations once again. We also want to recognize and thank for their work our district and area coordinators of the VASP program. We have Josie Williams. Alice Venegas. Angie Apolaca. And David Ayala. Congratulations and thank you so much. Our second recognition will honor an Eastlake High School student for being a National Center for Women in Technology Award recipient. She is a winner among 24 students in the El Paso area who applied for this award and is being honored for her computing skills, proven leadership ability, academic performance, and plans for a post-secondary education in the field of computer science. From Eastlake High School, congratulations to Victoria Mendoza. Next, we recognize SISD Fine Arts students for being named to the prestigious All-State Choir Band, Wind Ensemble, and Jazz Band Groups. Of the thousands of students across the state who participate and compete in UIL Performing Arts Groups, very few advance through area and regional competition and even less are named All-State Musicians. This year, eight SISD students earned this honor in their respective divisions. They are, from America's High School, Michael De La Rosa. His orchestra director is Ms. Adrienne Dunn. Also from America's High School, Skylar Gallegos. Band director is Henry Vega. From Eastlake High School, Cassandra Beato. Choir director is Liliana Labrado. From Montwood High School, Guillermo López. Also from Montwood High School, Matthew Palacios. Another student from Montwood, Julian Saucedo. Their band director is Albert Licón. From Socorro High School, Raúl Olivas. Also from Socorro, Sofia Gonzalez. Assistant band director is Rebecca Mondreal. And their band director is Mark Mumau. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition will honor the America's High School Girls Cross-Country Team for winning the 2016-16A District Championship. The Trailblazers maintained their discipline and dedication all year long by running a minimum of six miles a day to sustain their high-achieving record and prepare for the win. In addition to winning the district championship, the team also had three members earn all district honors and qualified for regionals. Congratulations to the Lady Trailblazers. They are Daphne Duran. Andrea Lucero. Priscilla Villalobos. Jackie Aguilar. Victoria Duran. Anna Rodríguez. Yasmin Márquez. Coach Victor Ruiz. And they are led by head coach, Ken Lucero. Alright, congratulations once again. Next, we have a special presentation to recognize a Socorro High School tennis coach for being selected the 2016 Greater El Paso Tennis Association High School Coach of the Year and the 2016 United States Tennis Association Southwest High School Coach of the Year. His tennis program was selected out of the many programs throughout Arizona, New Mexico, and Texas. Having coached for more than 12 years, he serves as a mentor and positive Having coached for more than 12 years, he serves as a mentor and positive role model for current and former athletes, as well as other members in the El Paso-area tennis community. Let's hear it for the 2016 Coach of the Year from Socorro High School, Coach Michael Bezmeck. Our second special presentation will honor an Eastlake High School teacher for being selected as a winner of the Aspirations in Computing Educator Award given by the National Center for Women in Technology. She was one of some 300 educators throughout the nation to receive the award and the only one to receive the honor in the El Paso region. Congratulations to Sheila Robles. Next, we will recognize a Team SISD Principal for being named the 2017 West Texas Speech and Debate Association Principal of the Year. The program recognizes outstanding secondary school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality opportunities for students in speech and debate, as well as demonstrating exemplary contributions to the profession. From Eastlake High School, congratulations to Principal Gilbert Martinez. Congratulations once again. Our final recognition will honor the Council on Regional Economic Expansion and Educational Development, or CREED, for partnering with Team SISD in support of our Teacher Dual Credit Scholarship Program. CREED has generously donated $76,000 to pay for Team SISD teachers' certification to teach dual-credit courses. This great community investment will benefit our outstanding teachers and countless students who will earn college credits in their classes. With the support of CREED and our community as a whole, SISD will build upon its aggressive approach to expand dual-credit and advanced academic programs, which has helped students get a head start in college and saved their families substantial tuition costs. Last year alone, with our extensive dual-credit opportunities at every high school and unique dual-credit summer program, Team SISD students earned some 17,000 college credit hours and potentially saved over $6 million in college tuition costs. Joining us tonight to represent CREED are Mr. Dan Olivas. Mr. Manny Soto. And CREED Chair, Mr. Richard Castro. Thank you, gentlemen, once again for your contributions. And that concludes our recognitions for the CD.
Yeah, it is kinda hot in here. We're working on it. Okay, let's move down to item number six, Board Trustees Business, Consider Approval, the Proclamation for National School Breakfast Week, March 6th to the 10th, 2017. Ms. Chinaski.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Every year, the National School Lunch Programs throughout the country declare one week to be recognized as National School Breakfast Week. The week is aimed to spotlight breakfast programs and promote breakfast consumption. Socorro Child Nutrition Breakfast Program is revered as one of the country's breakfast champions. In Socorro, we provide breakfast for all students at no cost, breakfast in the classroom for all students from pre-K to eighth grade. High school students are provided up to seven choices of breakfast combos daily, to include menudo being the favorite on Fridays. We have serving kiosks at our high schools to allow easy access for our students. One of our great programs we have for our breakfasts at our high schools is our Second Chance Breakfast, which allows students who participate in sports, bands, UIL, anything extracurricular in the early mornings, it allows them to come and get breakfast after the first bell. I'm honored to lead such an amazing team of dedicated employees who provide healthy, nutritious breakfast meals to our Team SISD students. At this time, I would like to introduce Brayden Chinaski, third-grade student at Benito Martinez, to read the National School Breakfast Week proclamation for your consideration.
Whereas the school breakfast program has served our nation admirably since it was permanently established in 1975, and whereas the school breakfast program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the school breakfast program joins and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs, and whereas there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now, therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District do hereby proclaim the week of March 6th through 10th, 2017, as National School Breakfast Week, and I encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits, in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future.
Thank you, Brayden. Great job. Thank you. At this time, I ask the board's consideration for this proclamation.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Ayub, second by Mr. Nakira. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Poked? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go down to item number seven, open forum. Nobody assigned in for open forum. Okay, let's go down to item eight, district reports, facilities, Mr. Ayington.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Beginning on page 13 is the facility report. We met earlier this week, or this, yeah, last week, to review the facility report in our facility committee. The first project I have is the Aquatic Center. We have been working on that for the last few months. The exterior pool is completed, and we have filled it up with the water. We are continuing to work on one of the slides. And this week, or last week, we began draining the interior pool, and we are beginning to start working on replastering the interior of the pool. And there's your slide, Mr. Gandara. It's ready to go down. This shows the new play structure on the left, my left, in the shallow part of the pool. The pool is filled with water. We are balancing the pool with the chemicals and stuff. And then, of course, the other picture on the lower right-hand corner is the exterior slide, and we are continuing to work on that. But the exterior pool is complete, and like I said, we have moved to the interior of the pool, started draining the competition pool and the multipurpose pool, and will begin our plaster job on those pools once the water is drained. The next project we're working on is, of course, the HVAC renovations at Socorro High School, which has to do with the administration area, the library, and the corridors. We are continuing to work with our engineers. We had a meeting last week, I mean, yesterday, with our staff to go over that project, and we are continuing to work on that, and we will be bringing more information to you once we get into that. But that project is going. And hopefully, we'll have it completed sometime this summer, or as soon as possible. We're looking at that timeline right now, but our goal is to get it completed in August. The last project is, of course, our new elementary school, the prototypical design. We've been working with our architect, BLK Architect, and their consultants, reviewing the plans and basically gotten through schematic design and are proceeding into design development. We had a meeting last week with our kitchen consultant to review the cafeteria layout of the new school. We've met with our special ed department and all our other curriculum people, and we actually have added another unit to this elementary school for the special ed unit. Currently, we're sitting at 851 is the maximum capacity, with a functional capacity of just under 800, 765. So, a little over 108,000 square feet. So, it is smaller than Purple Heart, because it's not a school that's going to be added to. It's strictly an elementary school. We continue to work on this. There are some other agenda items later in the board meeting that has to deal with this, but I will answer any questions at this time.
Any questions from Strayton?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strayton. Next, we'll have grant report. Ms. Tornell.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board of Trustees. For tonight's grants update, our continuing grants, our Project Smart Grant is in its first year of a two-year no-cost extension. I think everything is pretty well going real smoothly there. Our APEN program, we've got our student ambassadors, and we have an attendance goal of 80 students, contracted students with the Army. And for our first month, we reached it this, for January, so we're really excited about that. Our special education, that grant for the military-connected students, we're going to integrate all of our grant plans together for all of our military grants, and so we're working on doing that there, and also creating a webpage. And then the last one, we've got our new military liaison on board. He's doing a great job for us already, and helping out at Pebble Hills High School as well, where they really need him. And our Kellogg Foundation, our Win Academy, we are getting the evaluation plan done by the end of this month. Applications awarded, CREED, which already was here this evening, for 76,000 for our dual-credit. We received that. We submitted a bunch of applications this past month. Our Impact Aid for the year is done. And then we did two robotics grants that we're partnering. The one, the first robotics grant for STEM Equity, that was an actual notice of intent, and you had to be invited to apply. We already heard back that we have been invited to the next round to apply for that grant. So, we will be proceeding, that's due March 21st. And then we did two small grants with Wells Fargo for the fine arts, so that we can allow the students to do a showcase, to do an exhibit at the art museum, El Paso Museum of Art, if we get that one funded. And El Paso Museum of Art will partner with us as well for another $1,800 that they have committed. And then the other one is for summer art academies at four of our middle schools. Grants awaiting notification, we still haven't heard on any of those. It's probably going to be a while on those last two before, or probably all of them for a while. Applications in progress, the truancy prevention and intervention grant for two juvenile case managers. We did get that submitted yesterday, and that one is for those two positions at 88,800 for one year. Then we also are looking at J.J. Watt Foundation for uniforms and equipment. And the Texas Workforce Commission, that's a single grant, that we're just investigating that one for a standards alignment for adult education. And then I'll, again, I picked up two more grants today, National Endowment of the Arts and another Department of Ed grant that we're looking at as well. Okay, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tornell, item nine, consent agenda.
E1. E1.
Item E1. Is that the only one? Any other items to be pulled? Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Consent agenda, with the exception of E1.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Rodriguez and by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Motion carries. Item E1.
Mr. Gandara, I don't know if Mr. Garcia or Ms. Macias wanted to address this. I know we spoke about it last night at finance, and thank you, you and Ms. Macias and Ms. Olson, for answering my questions today. I wanted to touch base on a couple of things. By us going into this bid for our athletic apparel, for game-day apparel for the students, I know that there's a rebate tied into this, but were you all able to assess if overall there will be a cost savings to the district when we do this? We didn't talk about this yesterday, and I don't, I don't mean to catch you if you don't know, but we need to look it up.
Yes, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. The combination of this solicitation, not only pricing, but of the incentive program, I think some of the cost savings that we are going to take benefit from is that we are allowed to buy practice apparel that is not a name brand, and that's, we're going to see some savings at that stage.
And to, just so I can be clear, so, anything that we purchase as far as this athletic apparel that we order through this vendor, then consequently, we would get a rebate of 10%. Is that correct? of ten percent, is that correct?
Correct. There's certainly some additional incentives if campuses decide to move to one of the selected brands. But in addition to that, there is an overall percent back to those campuses in regards to apparel or product. So, it depends on what the brand the campuses will be selecting, but it is a ten percent of the overall spend. That's one portion of the incentive package.
And we'll be able to buy this over the internet and so if parents want to augment this or support their, their local sports at their high school and they purchase additional items, do we get any benefit from that?
Yes, those transactions that are purchased through a campus portal for staff, for students and parents or community as well, the campuses will see the benefit directly to their campus accounts.
And then one last question, just for the record. I understand another district entered into a similar type of thing, but they locked in on a brand, but my understanding is one of the problems they have, they can't mix and match. Will we be able to mix and match? Because I understand maybe the cost of shoes is eating them alive. Will we be able to pick and choose so that we get the best pricing?
Yes, so this package that we are presenting, we are recommending one vendor, multi-brand, and that's where we see the substantial savings when compared to some of the other contracts around the area.
Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Garcia, so prior to this, mostly our schools were left to negotiate these contracts individually as they made their purchases, correct? So, this allows us to consolidate, I guess, basically our negotiating power and not just across our high schools, which, you know, those sports activities do consume a larger portion of the budget, but it also allows us to consolidate the other athletic programs, middle school, and also take advantage of this, this bid, this discounted pricing, correct?
Correct. So, what this solicitation has done is establish a master agreement that all campuses could take advantage of, as well as incentive packages for our middle schools, which in the past, if I recall, they were not there. And so, our middle schools will also benefit from this as well if they do decide to use this contract.
And while our high schools will have to select over the period of three years, and I understand from our discussion last night, that was a good decision because it allows them to transition. It's not like they have to go out tomorrow and all of a sudden, you know, re-equip the entire team, but rather, as equipment needs replacement, replenishment, et cetera, they're able to move towards that. So, in three years, their game gear, not the practice gear, not, but game gear, in order to receive the maximum benefit, they'll have to select from one brand or another and just stick with that brand, correct?
You are correct. There is a transition phase in this agreement where we are not required to re-issue new uniforms at the beginning of the contract. So, you're, that's correct, sir.
And regardless of which brand they've selected, we've already got the discounted pricing, so our athletic coordinators or the athletic director at each of the high schools or any of the middle schools, they don't have to do any of the negotiation. All they have to do is go to the catalog, make their purchase decisions, and it's a single vendor, so they don't have to negotiate with any vendors anymore. Regardless of what brand they choose or what they're buying, they get to take advantage of all this, correct?
Correct. The only portion is that those sports that do want customization, then that's something that would have to be discussed at that time.
But we've got pricing for that as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then our middle schools at this point, I know our middle schools aren't going to go to, you know, select between the name-branded information, but should they choose, right, they could also buy name brand, but it also includes discounted pricing for the apparel that traditionally our middle schools purchase, which is typically not, you know, the name band, but, but other equipment like Russell or Wilson or anybody else. So, we get discounted pricing there as well. They're not forced into buying the more expensive stuff, which I know-
You are correct, sir.
Okay, was one of the drawbacks to some of the other agreements that, that become familiar with. Okay. All around, sounds like a good deal.
Yep. Mr. Ayton, thank you. The rebates, are they going to come to the district to see, you know, that we don't lose the yearly rebate because it's only valid for one year? So, we need to control somehow that those rebates are being used. Is that going to come to the district or directly to the high school?
That'll go directly to the high school, to our students. So, that was a discussion that was, that we had during the committee and we want to ensure that our students benefit from those, from that information or from the incentives that we get, so it'll go right back to the campuses.
Thank you.
Well, but, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ayub.
But that was a good, were we able to look up or discuss with them if we can roll over the credit? Because, yeah, if we end up buying a bunch of football jerseys in June anticipating that, you know, we're going to use them in July or August, September timeframe, we don't want to lose that, that credit, that rebate. Are we going to be able to roll that over for a period of time so that we can still take advantage of it?
No, all the incentive programs must be used during that contract year. And so, it's crucial that it's awarded so that we start moving forward with the timelines that are in place to order fall uniforms, spring uniforms, and so forth. And so, some incentives are going to be upfront, others are going to be throughout the accumulation of the total purchases, but they must be used within that contract year. It's not necessarily a school year. It's a contract year.
What's our contract year?
So, as soon as it gets approved, we'll go ahead and execute and, which means some rebates will be available during the January timeframe to order for fall sports.
Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Garcia, would those rebates be split evenly amongst the sports teams? Because you have the football team and we don't want to leave out the tennis team and the golf team.
That's exactly right. Whenever we had our conversation, we're going to bring in our principals and that's why it's going to be campus-based and we're going to develop that plan and we're going to put it into regulation so that it is clear and that way, everybody benefits from this incentive that we have.
President Gondra. I do want to thank Mr. Garcia and Ms. Macias' team because this is a big decision and they had a meeting with all the athletic coordinators from the different high schools and some other additional coaches, because we involve, you know, in this, making a big decision like this, we don't just, not top-down, we want to hear, get input. And I believe, you want to take ten, fifteen seconds to describe how that meeting went?
Yeah. And what we did is we actually, it was that democratic process. Every single sport chose their representative. So, we had a representative for every sport here in our district and even though we had all of the athletic coordinators there, there was one voice for them. That way, it was completely consistent. I do want to thank our finance department. They did a great job, very organized, and everybody's voice was heard. It was not just one meeting, it was multiple meetings that we had with the information and, and it was, it was quite informative. Please.
Sure. You know, what I'd like to add to that is certainly, you know, thank the athletic departments for taking part in this, but we took it several steps that allowed within the procurement method. We had finalists, we asked them to make presentations. We wanted to make sure that we saw everything that was presented and, and because of that process, I think that we were able to select not only, I think around, around the state, you see exclusive contracts with a particular brand and at this time, SISD did not take that step. We felt that it wasn't in the right interest at this moment and so the recommendation is to make a vendor, one vendor award with multiple brands.
Question. Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Garcia, the bid, is, is it a one-year contract with subsequent renewals or how does that run?
Yeah, we wrote our contract as one-year with four one-year extensions. Keep in mind that within the contract, we also have that three-year implementation plan, right? Depending if, if certainly we have asked our coaches to make sure that we do a vendor performance because if we do have any concerns or issues, that we note that. And because we will have a master agreement in place that we want individuals to sign, in the past, it was just, just a PO process, we feel that we should have the mechanism to address some of those, you know, cancel clauses or any, anything else that might come.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be good because I think I share Mr. Ayub's concern where if the contract, what month are we in, February? If, you know, the contract, let's say we sign the contract March thirty-first, you know, and then all of a sudden, somebody is making, I can't even think of a sport, of course, it's going to run through the summer, but, but, okay, let's say that we're preparing for football by making the purchases in preparation for the fall in March and then all of a sudden, we've got that, that ten percent rebate, you know, from a program that uses a lot of equipment and the contract renews March thirty-first and we're making our purchases in March thirty-first, you know, with that renewal provision, we should be able to carry over, you know. Now, if we don't renew the contract, I, you know, completely understand why they would say, okay, no, your rebate's gone. But if we do, you know, I would hope that they wouldn't force us into an immediate purchasing decision because, you know, just to do to the timing. So, hopefully, that's something that we can still get an understanding at least from them that we'd be able to do that.
Sure, and so we'll bring in the vendor to discuss those details and certainly we will get with legal to, to make sure that language is incorporated into the agreement.
I think, I don't remember off the top of my head, Mr. Garcia, but at the time of the renewal, does it come back to the board next year at the same time for renewal or is it just?
As all of our contracts, we indicate during the initial, unless the board decides that this is one of those contracts that we all want to see, we can, we can address, we can take-
I'd certainly be interested in seeing this one back next year to review the performance, to make sure that the benefits are there and then to understand exactly, you know, how much the rebates were and then, you know, what, what the distribution was, et cetera.
At least walk it through finance.
Right, absolutely.
Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Ayub.
Mr. Garcia, I noticed on our board package, the total estimated cost was five hundred thousand, but on our, on our-
Handout.
Hand, agenda here, it says price will be determined on a later date.
Yeah, so what happened is that we provided a placeholder on the initial packet because we did our final review and presentation, I believe it was last week. And so, at the time, we wanted to make sure that there was a placeholder. And so, the, the attachment that you have today is after the, after the finalists were presented and evaluation was done. And so, you also have reports comparing last year to this year and, and as, and as all solicitations that come to the board is, it's an estimate. If we need to request for more funding, then we will do that at the time. But as you can see, the numbers, what we did is that we took an average of what it would be just for the apparel portion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, second by Mr. Gondra. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Now, item number ten, new business, consider approval of notice of separation incentive, Mr. Campoya.
Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Rudy Campoya, Chief Human Resources Officer for the school district. Once again, coming before you to request approval, the district would like to offer a separation incentive for classroom teachers, administrators, or other professional exempt staff that are assigned to a school site who plan to voluntarily resign their position within SISD at the end of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen contract year. If approved tonight, we will offer an incentive of five hundred dollars to the first seventy-five employees in the above-mentioned categories who submit their written notice of separation on or before March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. With your approval, notices will be delivered tomorrow via email to all those employees at school sites with a deadline of March thirty-first. The total financial impact for doing this is a total of thirty-seven thousand five hundred, should all seventy-five employees take advantage of this opportunity. At this time, administration recommends consideration and approval of this item as presented.
Question. Mr. Gondra.
Mr. Campoya, so notice of separation, so if I'm a teacher and I just want to resign because I want to work somewhere else, that's valid as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They would just have to submit it by March thirty-first and it would be effective the end of the school year.
Okay. Mr. Campoya, I certainly appreciate HR's initiative in coming early with this. I know it certainly allows us to plan effectively for the next year, you know, right alongside as, as we're planning for the budget that I can recall. I think this is the third year that we've done this, but it certainly allows us to staff appropriately and hire. I mean, if they resign by March thirty-first, we still have April and May to try and find replacements where instead, if someone waits until July as the school year is beginning, then we're scrambling trying to find teachers. And while it does come with the cost, certainly the cost of trying to find a replacement as school has already started is higher, not to mention the fact that there's probably learning that suffers because we're trying to find replacements at that time rather than being able to plan appropriately. So, I once again commend your staff for bringing this at a time that allows us to plan.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gondra, second by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Go to item B, consider approval of proposed changes to Socorro SISD health plan.
Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Before you to review a brief summary of the information that has been brought forth to the committee and to review during, that we reviewed during the last three workshops. During the first workshop, excuse me, we were requested, administration was requested to bring forth a comparison in terms of the amount that was being contributed by school districts in the area. And again, during that work, first workshop held on December the twelfth, we were able to bring over information in regard to what Clint ISD, El Paso ISD, and Isleta ISD are currently contributing per employee, per eligible benefit employee per month. In addition to that, we made some updates in terms of the increase or the numbers that we will be considering if we were to increase the employee rate by ten dollars a month or by twenty dollars a month. And again, I'm going to try to highlight some of the points that were reviewed at Following that, we were requested to bring over information in regard to cost utilization or what we are experiencing as a group, how it's that we're spending our money. So, we received information from our third-party administrator, Signa, which is one of our business partners, and they provided information in regard to what we have been incurring in terms of what our expenses are for inpatient, outpatient, professional services, and so on and so forth. In addition to that, based on the cost analysis, we were able to look at some levers that would possibly help us reduce the deficit, the four-point-nine deficit that we have in our fund balance. And some of those levers include further educating our population, our members in terms of establish a relationship with a primary care physician, seek treatment from a particular specialty, implement the pharmacy formulary, the step therapy program, in addition to other wellness initiatives. In regard to the wellness initiatives, we visited partnerships that we have established so far with our, some fitness centers in the areas, which are EP Fitness, Planet Fitness, and Gold's Gym. Sooner or after, around the second workshop held on January the eleventh, it was brought up to our attention to somewhat focus more so on phase one because at the initial discussions, we, administration brought over a multi-phase plan, a three-year plan, though instead of looking at a three-year plan, we were presented with a task of bringing this in different phases. So, at this point, during, or as a result to that workshop held on January twenty-fourth, we were, the suggestion was for us to bring phase one at this point and request the approval or consideration of increasing employee premiums depending, regardless of the level of coverage, excuse me, twenty dollars across the board. In addition to that, there were some adjustments in terms of increasing deductibles and co-payments, comparing the primary care physician co-pay to a specialty co-pay. During the last workshop I mentioned, on January twenty-fourth, we were asked to bring- over the numbers in terms of what is the level of coverage, how many employees or membership we have under the premier, the base, and the high deductible plan, in addition to that, we were requested to bring information in regard to the groups in terms of group type, administrative, teachers, technology, paraprofessionals, and auxiliary. Towards the end of the last session, and again, during the workshop, we discussed the results we received from a survey held by, or conducted by TASB, which, in not so many words, it comes down to what employers or school districts are doing through the area, is they're passing down the cost to their employees, so why bring all this information, as I mentioned in several meetings, what we're trying to do is not bring our deficit, reduce our deficit all at once, but take it in phases to where we're able to not have that much impact on our employees, their bottom line, and of course, the school district budget. At this point, my, that concludes my presentation, I don't know if there are any questions.
Mr. Gandara.
Mr. Guevara.
Mr. Carmona.
Yes, sir.
You and the, the rest of the staff, I certainly, right off the bat, wanna thank you for all the extra hard work that you all did in trying to put this together, these are, as usual, are not popular decisions, and so, we know it may impact employees one way or the other, but we're hoping to maintain their healthcare, maintain things positive for them anyway. I realize that one of the reasons you're here so early is, and again, an effort to educate the employees early on, since we're gonna have registration this summer, they, they can make some decisions on their insurance coverage, and so that they can plan, I don't know, five, six months in advance, that there will be a ten, a twenty dollar increase on their plan, I don't know if that's gonna, in the long run, do it, I know that the school district, we're putting in also some funding in order to maintain the healthcare program, and we may have to do that for some years, again, it's an imp, it's a, a big effort to minimize the impact on the employees on this healthcare cost, that we know everything's going up, and when you look at that very first slide, you realize that you, certainly Mr. Res, and Dr. Espinoza, have done everything possible to try to keep this healthcare cost down, and, but we're at a point that it needs to go up a little bit, and I think the, the most responsible thing to do is to affect this increase slowly, incrementally, so that employees don't have a big jump like has happened elsewhere. We still have an excellent healthcare program, and I, I'm proud to say that, I think if our employees are ill, or their family are ill, they have very good coverage that hopefully will, will take care of their families, so I wanted to start out thanking you and, and the staff for, for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir.
I, I don't think it's gonna be popular, so maybe not so much a, a question here as I, we, we did spend several workshops, asked plenty of questions, and also talked about it at the committees, I think it's probably a good idea at this point, I certainly would like to look at it in a year, as we assess it, how, what we need to do for phase two and phase three, maybe we'll be able to minimize it more then, maybe it'll be more bad news, I don't know, but rather than approve a three-year plan, maybe if we look at it here in the early going yearly, let's see if, how well we can sustain this, if we could.
And if I may, Mr. Abe, and members of the board, one point that I forgot to mention is, you're absolutely right, we're looking at increasing the employer contribution by twenty-five dollars per month, so that will bring the current contribution of five fifty up to five seventy-five, so in hope that, you know, as you said, that will reduce our deficit and then revisit within a year and see what, what we are at that point experiencing.
Right.
Mr. Gandara.
Mr. Nakada.
Mr. Carmona, and, and, our discussion to this point is, is only for phase one, right? Phase two and phase three will be revisited in future times, correct?
That is correct, sir, yes.
So we'll have the opportunity to see what the impacts of the increases are, and hopefully through our education efforts, our preventative care efforts, we'll be able to maybe minimize the impact and, and maybe make some adjustments to phase two and phase three, that's, that's what I'm hopeful for, but I do understand, there's, there's, there's a lot of responsibility on the individual users, you know, and, and, and I too, I certainly understand sometimes when my daughters are sick, it's real quick to take them to, you know, to summit, to an urgent care, or one of these, you know, twenty-four hour ERs, but the responsible thing to do, if it's not an urgent situation, is certainly take them to the pediatrician, because it, it adds costs, and if I think about me as an individual, doesn't add a lot of cost, but, you know, if we, you, you put all of us together, then, of course, it, it adds costs, and, and that's the whole problem, when I say all of us together, of course, I'm talking about the entire healthcare system, you know, I happen to work in healthcare, so it's news that I follow, certainly. I do appreciate the fact that, that we're trying to move this, this has been, as part of the finance committee, we certainly receive reports on a monthly basis, and this just has been an area of my concern, you know, for, for some time now, simply because I see our expenditures, you know, going up, and our reserves not being sufficient, so I, I know the costs are certainly increasing, and it makes, it, it just, I mean, it makes sense, you can't continue, you know, to inadequately fund a health plan, or otherwise the health, the health plan goes away.
Right.
And then sharing the cost, of course, is there, again, I do appreciate that it's a modest cost as well, and I know that, that the contributions from the district have gone up, you know, by more than what we're asking the employees, it doesn't make it any less painful, it doesn't make it any less pleasant, but something that, that, that we have to do, you know, nonetheless, and I know my insurance plan went up, it's, mine has gone up for the last three years, beyond that, I can't remember, I just, and I don't wanna research and see, 'cause, you know, I'm, I'm likely to find that it's gone up each, you know, time, every time, so, you know, but I do recall it's gone up the last three years, but again, you know, a, a moderate increase as opposed to waiting three years from now, and all of a sudden realizing, okay, we've got an increase in the hundreds, not, you know, in, in, in the low, in the twenty-dollar range there, so certainly appreciate I appreciate all the effort that, that went into it, I know we asked a lot of questions, and, you know, we, when it was first brought to us, we asked for some information, and then more information, and the more information we got, the more we asked for, you know, but it is a good health plan, and I certainly, you know, again, understand how important a health plan is, not just in, when you're using it, but in order to retain and recruit, you know, quality personnel as well, so I realize the importance of that, but, you know, just, thanks, and, and, you know, hopefully we'll see some unexpected pleasant news as, as it comes time to, to consider phase two and, and phase three.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Abe, second by Mr. Nakada, any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Down to item number C, consider approval of correction deed, conveyance of land for public use, Mr. Iyington.
I see the air, air condition is working now, because they're all freezing over here. Yes, Mr. Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, on page one, one oh two is a item that has to do with something that happened back in November, on November the fifteenth in two thousand and five, this was a piece of property or an easement that was conveyed to the county, El Paso County, from our old ed center up to where Rojas is, it has to do, it had to do with that light that went in at one time, if you recall, years ago, back then, none of y'all were on the board, but there were, you know, Rojas stopped at Eastlake, it didn't go through, and then they started all the development, this was conveyed, like I said, back in two thousand and five, but through our research, when they were researching it, they found out there was two tracks that were missed, that were not numbered correctly, so this is a recommendation for your consideration, a correction deed to that piece of parcel that was conveyed back in two thousand and five, track eight E one was previously conveyed to the state of Texas for the benefit of a permanent school fund on October the eleven two thou, uh, October the eleventh nineteen ninety-one, the two thousand and five D should have conveyed track E and track B, and through the research, in order to correct this, the title defect, Lone Star Title has agreed that a correction deed, change in the conveyance of track eight E and track eight B would resolve the title defect. We are gonna attain meets and bound descriptions on it, which is the normal way to do on a correction deed, our legal department, Mr. Mata, has been working on this, he has reviewed the correction deed that is attached, administration recommends consideration and approval of correction deeds as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Iyington, by Mr. Guevara, any further discussion?
So, Mr. Iyington, all we're basically doing is honoring or agreeing to honor the previous deeds as they were intended, and as everybody understood, so we're just approving the correction so that the deed matches what should have happened to begin with.
Correct. That is correct.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, let's go down to item D, consider approval of easement agreement between EP Summit Investment LLC and Socorro ISD, Mr. Iyington.
Yes, as you recall, some months ago, the developer of the property behind the ed center approached us to, in order for us to get, for us to grant them an access even to that property off of Eastlake, and there was a, I think in your documents, at the very back, you saw the old site plan, or the site plan of the ed center where it shows the access easement coming in there, they're granting us an easement to tie into the sewer eventually, we're, that's the, one of the few, or the only building, I think, that we still have on septic tank, and, and gas, and propane, so it would tie in the gas service. It's, doesn't cost the district anything, they're making all the changes, they're making the modifications to the parking lot, they're actually grant, giving us a little bit more parking spaces, they will allow, actually allow us to, once that area is developed, if we still have that ed center, we could park on their parking lot, so the deed has been, or the easement has been prepared, reviewed by council, administration recommends consideration and approval as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by...
Mr. Guevara.
Mr. Guevara, second by Mr. Gonzalez, any further discussion?
Mr. Gandara.
Mr. Nakada.
Again, Mr. Iyington, just to, to remind everybody, certainly, this agreement, this granting of easement does a couple of things, number one, it ties us into city water and, and gas lines, which we do not have right now, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and then, I certainly understand why the developer won't want this access, being that it's right on the corner of Eastlake and I-ten, without us providing the access through the ed center there, essentially, someone would have to go all the way to Horizon to come back to this location and return, so, you know, certainly there's definitely benefit there, but, you know, all the improvement, everything that's being changed, us being tied in, tied into, to the utility lines for the gas and water, et cetera, all that is completely without cost to the district, right? Inconvenience, maybe, yes, but not monetary cost, right?
That is correct, we are, we do have Horizon water already, so we're tied into the water, it's the sewer and the gas.
Okay, the sewer and the gas.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you for clarifying that, okay, so, I, I mean, certainly there's lots of benefit to us, and not only that, but I believe it also makes the property more valuable there, because, you know, we will have more parking, improved access, everything else that, that goes with that, so, okay, makes sense to me.
We do, we do have a motion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Mr. Gandara, I'd like to make a motion to move item ten E and ten F to executive session.
Second.
There's a motion been made by Mr. Abe, second by Mr. Gonzalez, to move item E and F into executive session, any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Let's go to item eleven, executive session, this meeting is to be closed, for consultation with legal counsel regarding ESD versus SISD lawsuit, and proposed settlement for ESD, El Cortez EEOC charge for number one, four, five, one, dash, two, zero, one, six, dash, zero, two, three, five, three, and El Guerra versus SISD to discuss personal and real estate matters, and to consider, there we go, administrative recommendations for principal at Roshe Kallerher Elementary School under Texas Government Code Section five, five, one point zero seven one, dash, five, five, one point zero seven two, and five, five, one point zero seven four, the time is seven twenty-nine.
President Gandara, just one clarification, items E and F, the discussion in closed session is going to be under five, five, one point zero seven one.
Okay.
It smells human.
It smells human.
Good to get another set of eyes and ears.
Yep. Yes, sir.
We're back out of the executive session, it is eight thirty-five, item ten E, consider approval of contract, construction management at Risk Services for New Elementary School, Mr. Iyington.
Yes, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, this agenda item has to do with our new proposed elementary school, and to hire a construction manager at Risk to help us through the design and ultimately the construction of the project, the administrative review committee met and reviewed the proposals that were opened on January the twenty-seventh, the committee met on February the seventh, and, and basically came up with a recommendation. We had five proposers on the, that proposed on the new elementary school, we decided to rank all five of them, and I believe a week or so ago, you got the alphabetical order of the people that submitted their proposal. Tonight, administration has recommended that Baines General Contractor would be number one, Buford Thompson, two, Dan Tex, three, CF Jordan, four, and Vinagis Engineering, number five, per the policies and procedures that we adopted back in March of two thousand and four, the next step after the board approves would be that myself and legal counsel would can, come up with the negotiation and, and bring a contract to the board for approval. Administration recommends approval as, recommends to consideration of approval as submitted.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Abe, second by Mrs. Rodriguez, any further discussion?
Mr. Gandara. Mr. Iyington, I just want to know, this is a elementary school, what do we settle on the capacity of this school, how many students?
Just... Seven sixty-five? Seven sixty-five? Nine? Not nine hundred.
No, nine hundred's a lot, no, so that would be, that would be, who said that? Oh, you, no, that's...
Eight hundred and fifty-one is the maximum capacity.
And I got to tell you, for future, 800, we're pushing the maximum for an elementary school. Remember, elementary schools were these 400, 500 students, we went to 6, we're at 800. When we're getting to 900, we're talking a middle school. And for elementary kids, little kids, and the priorities, we got to do that. I would be more supportive of building additional schools if some time we needed than these massive elementary schools. We're not going to go anywhere with that. So 800 is good. Okay, sir, thank you.
Have a motion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to item 10F, consider approval of agreement between CBRE and SISD for broker services. Mr. Ayington.
Yes, on page 121 of your booklet, legal counsel and myself have been meeting with the firm that was selected to, for us to negotiate for the broker services for the district, and we have a contract attached if the board approves tonight. This will help us to look at land purchases for the various schools in the district, and it will also help us if we decide to have any property for sale. We will basically work on a, the broker will work on a commission basis, on a work order system that we will generate and tell them that we need X amount of square, X amount of acreage for our elementary school, or whatever piece of property we are looking for at that time. Administration would recommend approval of CBRE as the broker services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12A, decision impossible action regarding proposed settlement for ESD number one, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gondla, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I gave you an update on the ongoing litigation with the emergency services district number one, and they have returned with an additional proposal to resolve that litigation. I briefed you on that in closed session. It's my understanding that the board is willing to consider additional negotiation with ESD number one, but not, is not in agreement with the specific demand that has been made. So what I would ask is that you authorize the administration legal counsel to contact ESD number one's lawyer and continue the negotiations on the terms discussed in closed session, and if we can reach an agreement, that will be finalized at the March meeting.
Motion for district council to continue to negotiate with ESD one.
Motion has been made by Mr. Minister Ayo, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12B, decision impossible action regarding El Cortez EEOC charge number 451-2016-02353. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gondla, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I gave you an update on this EEOC charge as well. Ms. Cortez is a former teacher who was terminated by the district and went through the appeal process. She has now filed an EEOC charge, and I want to make it clear that the briefing that we gave to the board is simply a demand from Ms. Cortez to settle her EEOC charge in a possible lawsuit now at this early stage for what is a low sum, and so it's our recommendation from a strictly financial perspective that the board consider accepting the demand that was made by Ms. Cortez. If you're willing to do so, we would need a motion to authorize the administration legal counsel to complete the settlement on the terms discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Nagara, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12C, decision impossible action regarding El Guerra versus SISD. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gondla, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Again, another piece of litigation, this seemed to be the litigation month, unfortunately. Ms. Guerra is a former teacher for Socorro Independent School District, and we held mediation, myself and Mr. Campoya, regarding her pending lawsuit against the district. She has made a demand for settlement. We don't recommend that the board accept the demand that was made, which I briefed you about in closed session, but the board, if you're willing to consider authorizing us to return and make a counter offer to Ms. Guerra, which we would bring back to the board if they accept, on the terms discussed in closed session at the March meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Nagara, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12D, consider approval of administrative recommendation for principal at O'Shea Kelleher, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Gondla and members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Josie Betis to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the principal of O'Shea Kelleher Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayo, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. You guys really want to go home already? There's no more items on the agenda, this meeting is now over at 8:44.